We have our Public Works Director, Jason Chakowski, and the Executive Director of the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, Matt Click, with us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Hadashelt. My name is Jason Chakowski, and I am your Public Works Director. As you've all experienced, traffic is back. The quiet streets of the pandemic have returned to the bustling and, at times, very congested transportation arteries of 2019. For years, staff have worked to develop plans to relieve current congestion and meet the future needs of our community as it continues to grow. Unfortunately, due to inflation, updated state and federal grant formulas, and the much quicker-than-anticipated growth of our region, we simply lack sufficient funding for all that needs to be done. For the past decade, Roseville has worked alongside PCTPA and our regional partners to come up with a plan to find the funding we need, when we need it, to maintain the quality of life of our community desires. With me tonight to provide more details and help answer any questions you might have about the proposed plan is Matt Click, the Executive Director of the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, and I will turn it over to Matt.
Thanks, Jason. Is this -- okay, good. And I think I've got a PowerPoint there, and we can go by the introduction slide and just get to the next of it. And really, you know, I've got about 10 slides, six or seven minutes, just to sort of set the table to remind us how we got to here today. And then really, what we want to do is get into a dialogue with all of you as quick as we can. So what are we doing here? We really want to discuss our transportation needs and proposed solutions. And as Jason already told you, traffic is back, and it's continuing to increase. The other half of that is revenue is down and declining. The Legislative Analyst's Office has told us that over the next 10 years, we will lose an additional $6 billion in state sales tax revenue. Why is that? Because CAFE standards are going up. We have a goal of electric vehicle penetration, which is great from a climate perspective and an environmental perspective and an air quality perspective. It's not so great from a transportation funding perspective. So the very limited dollars we have in Sacramento are only going to decline. And just as an aside, the 18.4 cents a gallon we pay in federal fuel tax has not increased since 1993. And the Federal Transportation Trust Fund has been borrowing from the Treasury for more than 12 years. So there is no magic money in Sacramento, and there is no magic money in Washington, D.C. If we want to solve our traffic congestion problem and we want to solve our revenue problem, we're going to have to do it locally. So what we're proposing is a half-cent sales tax for transportation. Our economists have told us that'll generate $1.58 billion over 30 years. That's about $41 million a year. This is the fairest way to raise money locally because 17% of the money will come from outside of the district. So those folks coming from Sacramento, coming from the Bay Area, using our regional roadways are going to pay their fair share when they shop, when they eat in our restaurants and they shop at the Galleria and our other fine establishments. Could I please get the next slide? So what are we asking of you tonight? We are asking you to approve the South Placer County Transportation District Expenditure Plan. For clarity, we're not asking you to raise a tax. We're not asking you to put a tax on the ballot. We're not asking you to approve an ordinance. All of those activities will take place at the PCTPA board. What we're doing is we're asking you to only say that, yes, we concur that this is the appropriate and right list of projects to fund if the voters were to come back in November and vote to the positive for this measure. We have current polling, and just as an aside, 68% of Rosevillians would like this measure, and they would like the opportunity to vote for this in November. What you see on here is sort of the actions I will be taking with my staff over the next month. We're here with you all tonight. We will go to all seven jurisdictions before returning to the PCTPA board in April for the first reading of the ordinance, if we're successful in the next month. Next slide. Just some reminders as to how we got here today. We did attempt a countywide measure in 2016. And of course, you know that went down. That did not pass by a few points. In 2018, AB 1413 was passed, allowing us to create a sales tax district. Why is that? It's because Placer County is a really big place. In southwest Placer, its congestion, its population, and what it needs looks a lot different than middle Placer and eastern Placer. And so we've got this legislation to have a sub-district. That district is defined as Lincoln, Rockland, and Roseville. Some things for you to consider, just so you're aware. The money must be spent on transportation and transportation-only benefiting the district. The money cannot be taken by the state. We will control it locally. The money must also be used to supplement existing transportation revenues. We cannot take additional budgets, current transportation budgets, move them to other things, and then replace them with this money. This money has to be in addition only. That is in state law. Lastly, a Citizens Oversight Committee will have full audit power over the revenue and the operations of the authority. Next slide. So why consider this? I think we talked about this. State funding for highway and road improvements, looking at the second bullet. Just to punctuate this, any state dollars that might be laying around that aren't going to go into just maintaining what we have, filling potholes and replacing guardrail, are going to be looked at and used for things such as transit and active transportation at the state level. There is no appetite at the state level to take very limited state fuel tax dollars and widen and expand roads. So that is just another thing we have to consider. And if we want that as part of our future, we're going to have to solve for that locally. And lastly, it's important to know competitive funding requires local funding matches. This isn't the interstate program that Eisenhower signed into law in 1956, where we used to get 90% federal dollars with 10% matching or 80/20. Today, over half of the money requires a local match. And that's what Los Angeles, San Francisco, Sacramento, and 25 counties throughout California have. So when we, as PCTPA, on your behalf, or even you locally through your Public Works Department, go to apply for state competitive funding, you are at an absolute disadvantage because you don't have the local funding match. So the money that we're spending here in Placer County is being sent to operate trains for LA Metro in LA and down in San Diego. If we want to be competitive for the remaining state dollars, we will need a local match. Next slide. Just really quickly, what you're looking at is the density of accidents before 2018. And you can see that they're all spread out. And you see I-80 and 65 there. We all know what that figure looks like. East, you see the density and unfortunately fatalities east of the 80/65 as well. But please click to the next slide. You see they went away. And they went away after the Phase 1 interchange improvements of 80/65. But what you see is we still have a high density of accidents and actually more fatalities than before Phase 1 of the interchange west of the interchange and still up 65. My point with this slide is we still have a substantial safety problem at 80/65, and we need to fix it. Next slide. What you're looking at now is a view of traffic congestion. These are existing conditions. In other words, this is what we'd experience in 2023. Obviously, green's gray, red's really horrible, yellow's somewhere in the middle. Next slide. No build. This is a great traffic engineering term. It basically means if we do nothing. So if we do nothing, this is how the congestion will build by 2028. Please go to the next slide. This is 2038. One more slide, please. This is 2048. So what does this mean? This means that all of that regional traffic that really wants to go down the spine of 65 to 80 and find its way to 80, because that's what regional roadways are meant to do, if we don't improve these facilities to allow that traffic, that traffic is going to find its way through, you know, onto your local streets and, quite frankly, through your city. As you know, it does today to a degree. But the density and the duration by which it does is only going to increase over time. So this regional traffic is going to continue to find its way to your local roads if we don't improve 65 and 80. Next slide. So this is the plan. What would we do? Remember, there's the $1.58 billion. Over 52% of that is for major highway and roads, $825 million. And it's pretty simple. It's improve State Road 65. It's finish 80/65 interchange. It's finish up the I-80 Rockland Road interchange in auxiliary lanes. There's funding for baseline road. There's funding to do two grade separations at the 65 interchanges, which we'll need as more land use is developed and comes online. And there's a small amount of money in there for Placer Parkway. Next slide. Further, 25%, I should remind you, $1 in $4 will be in a local transportation program, and they will be returned directly to the three cities with no strings. They will be passed through. Roseville is about generally half of that population of those three cities. So you can assume about 12.5% of the total revenue is going to come right back to Roseville. That's about $5 million a year that will be passed through PCTPA to the city to use on transportation for your local roads, streets, whatever you want to use it on that's transportation-related. There's 12% for rail and transit. There's 5% for bike ped. And there's also 5% for competitive projects. And I will tell you, some people might say, why not more for bike and ped, or why not more for rail, right? You always get in this conversation about, should it be this mode or should it be that mode? Well, you know, right now, we have plenty of funding for our transit needs, and we're doing pretty good with bike ped. And into the future, the transit funding and the bike ped, if there's going to be money, soft money, that we can leverage this again to get grants from the state to get more of our hard-earned money back in Placer County, it's going to be in those categories. And so we highly anticipate by having this funding for rail and transit and bike ped, we'll be able to grab more of that money from Sacramento and bring it home. Lastly, competitive projects. We recognize this is a 30-year effort. There's a lot of innovation in transportation. Quite frankly, there has been more innovation in transportation in the last decade since the invention of the elevator or the assembly line. And that's going to continue. And recognizing that we don't have a full understanding of what will occur over 30 years, we want to have a grant-making function. So this could be for automated traffic signals, advanced traveler information systems. But we want to bring innovation to our transportation system. That's what that, you know, sort of nebulous term of competitive projects means. Last slide. And this just shows you the entire expenditure plan on one slide, and it adds into the fact that there is 1% for transparency, accountability, and administration. That is also capped by state law. So PCTPA is the governing body acting as the local transportation authority will be capped at a 1% administration fee. Next slide. So again, the action that we're asking for is to go with staff's recommendation and approve the South Placer County Transportation District Expenditure Plan. I appreciate your time. I look forward to questions.
Jason, did you have anything before we ask the council if they have questions?
Well, you know, I've been involved with this for over a decade now. We've been looking at all the options and what's coming down the road with the development that's already approved and in the pipeline. And we desperately need additional funding to make the improvements to keep traffic moving in Roseville. Like Matt said, you know, why is 65 and 80/65 so important to us? Roseville Parkway, Galleria, Pleasant Grove, all that cut-through traffic, people bypassing that interchange. If we don't make those improvements, you will see traffic out there that you will, people just start avoiding the area. It will be during the PMP, it'll be gridlocked. Cars can't move. There just are too many vehicles for the roadway network, for a local roadway network unless we build our own freeways. And that would kind of be counterproductive. So from where I sit, this is vitally important for the future of Roseville.
Great. Ask the council if they have any questions. I'll start with Councilmember Maricuji.
Jason, as we're looking that this might be going to PCTPA, and they're deciding if they're going to put this on the ballot, we continue to look for grants and other ways that we can fund some of our projects. I know they're bleak and difficult, but we're not stopping. We're looking at all the options out there.
Correct. We're applying for, we've applied for numerous grants recently that we were turned down, you know. Tiger before, infra now. We just aren't, we don't check all the boxes that they want to provide the money for those types of programs. We have been successful with bike trail money and transit money, which helps relieve some of our LTF funding, our local transportation funds that come through our bus program that we can use for some other things. But no, we are still applying. We're looking, we're going to Washington, D.C., Public Works is this spring to try to lobby for some additional funding for some of our key projects. So we're doing what we can, and we will continue to do so.
Councilmember Menadzev?
Just a few questions. You said in your presentation that the state has no appetite to widen roadways. Is that just out here in Placer County or throughout the state?
That's a great question, and it is throughout the state. You know, we participate in a statewide association called CalCog. I sit on a monthly call with other executive directors of similar entities across the state. Riverside County is one that is very similar to us, high-growth, you know, east of LA. And they have tried to look to get some of that, and they're not getting it either. And so it is across the state.
So I can pick up any magazine on any given month, newspaper, get on the internet, look at statistics. So are they just denying the increase in population from other places and traffic? Or are they just choosing not to see it? Is this something that we could aggressively lobby? Because I'm just wondering what kind of vacuum that they're living in because it doesn't matter where you go. We don't have it as bad as LA or other parts of the state. It seems kind of ridiculous to have no appetite to make a state like that.
It's a phenomenal question, and I'll take it head-on. While there are other parts of California that are like Placer, the vast majority of California is not like Placer. You know, Los Angeles County, its population is bigger than 40 states in America. They also have lobbyists and a political voice in Sacramento. So we could, and we can band together, and there are rural county task forces that try to work on some of these issues. But if you're sitting in Los Angeles or if you're sitting in San Francisco, you really love the state's sort of philosophy right now, and you want as much financing as you can for your light rail and trains. And I don't begrudge them that at all, you know, honestly. But, you know, we are a bit of the outlier in that, in what we need from a transportation perspective due to our growth.
So going back to that, thank you for that answer. But so there is ongoing collaboration throughout other parts of the state?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then you also mentioned bike pedestrian program. Could that include a widening or improvement of our trails because there's cycling on those trails?
Yeah, it absolutely could. And right now, you know, you all are involved in an active transportation plan. PCTPA just kicked off today, a countywide ATP as well. And the reason we're doing that programmatic work is to go from a program to a list of projects, most likely by different classes. You know, some would be online, in-lane, or, you know, on-road bike facilities, and then some could be trails. But yes, that would all be acceptable for funding.
Awesome. And then on the competitive projects you mentioned, could those be used for charging stations for electric vehicles?
It's a good question. What the state statute says is there has to be a transportation benefit to the district and a nexus for that. So it's a very good question. It's a little bit of a detail. It's probably too soon to answer that with credibility. But I would say likely, we would have to develop the methodology. And where the state is going with electrification, I would tend to say yes, I think it could be.
Sounds like that would be a win for them. They'd want to increase that availability. And then on the State Route 65 widening, three to five lanes, if this does go through and everything aligns and the stars shine upon us, what's the timeframe on that?
Yeah, and honestly, these are the hardest questions to answer clearly and concisely because you've got northbound, you've got southbound, you've got different phases of construction. I can tell you, a good portion of that project is already environmentally cleared and designed. So it's just waiting on funding. The very first thing we would do is the southbound auxiliary lanes and then one southbound general-purpose lane. That could go to construction as early as '26 and then the other phase '29. The rest of that project, some of it would need to have some environmental work redone and then, of course, design, so it would lag behind. But, you know, for the very, the most critical southbound part of that, we're just waiting on funding.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Councilman Albert?
For the $5 million roughly a year that PCTPA would give to Roseville, when would that start, assuming this passed in the fall?
Yeah, we've, so we, let's say it passes in the fall. The first time we would get a check would be April 1 of '25. And what we would do is we would set up that there would essentially be a pass-through. So we're not going to sit there like a bank and hold your cash. We're going to get, you know, we're going to get, you know, paid our receipts, and then we're going to turn around, and they would go to Roseville, Rockland, and Lincoln in real time. So April of '25, you would start seeing that revenue.
And do you bond for the full 30 years? Or I'm kind of curious how you do that funding?
Bonding's interesting. You know, when you bond, it costs you money, and it's about a dollar for dollar. So if I want to bond a $100 million project, I'm going to spend $100 million bucks roughly in finance costs. I come from a background working for an authority where we, you know, we issued debt. Every September, we'd go to Wall Street and issue debt. I would tell you this. We want the authority and ability to bond, which we don't currently have because you see what's happened because of labor, materials, and inflation, right? But we wouldn't want to bond an environmental report, a planning study, even design work, right? We would want to bond construction phasing, where you're going to go and you're going to issue $50, $100 million in debt. So we will have the authority to bond if this passes. I would say we will use that authority to bond, but we want to use it, you know, sparingly and smartly.
Right. And then when we had the last measure that failed countywide, I know Roseville passed it percentage-wise. A lot of comments I heard from the community was, well, let's not, I don't want another tax, let's make the state fix this. And I think that was a common theme that, in my opinion, an excuse that kept going. I was wondering if you could maybe just address again why that might not be a good thing to do, wait for the state to fix it and give us more money out of the kindness of their heart?
Well, you know, that was back in 2016. And I would ask, in the last eight years, has the state fixed it? Right? I mean, we have information, right? We don't have to guess. And so for sort of what I mentioned, you know, the situation that we are in relative to transportation funding has only declined, and it's going to decline. And that's not just a, you know, that's just not a California creation. That's all across the U.S. You know, it has to do with sales tax revenue, I mean, gas tax revenues and the way we fund things. So I cannot imagine a scenario where we see this great uptick and this, you know, this great increase in state funding. Does that not mean that Jason and myself and our teams are not going to work hard to go grab that grant money? No, we're going to. We're going to absolutely do that. But as he mentioned, we can't check all of the boxes on the application. But there has been absolutely no evidence that there's going to be an influx of, you know, revenue. Now, has there at the federal level due to the IIJA bill? There has. But if you look at where those federal dollars are, they're all in transit, right? You know, the New York City, you know, that was the largest FTA grant ever given, and it was about $5 or $6 billion, right? So there is large funding going to transit systems, heavy rail, Amtrak, things like that. But, you know, highway expansion in Placer County, California, isn't going to bounce high. Now, with that said, we do have an active federal advocacy program. And once we do have, you know, the ability to say we have a local match, we have already begun, you know, having meetings in DC. I had my first meeting last December and another one in January. So we will be looking to go and be competitive for an infra grant, you know, or a RACE grant. But without that local match, you know, we're going to knock on their door, and they're going to say, hey, it was great to see you. Come back when you have a local match.
Thank you. And I have some comments I'll reserve for later.
Vice Mayor Burris.
A comment and then a question. My comment is to thank you and your board for not giving up on this for over the last 10 years. And I concur with your assessment that it hasn't gotten better. And it reminds me of that statement that no one's coming, right? No one's going to come for us to save this problem. But my question is around kind of the electrification that we've talked about. So knowing where we're headed there and knowing that this is a gas tax and assuming that this passes, what's next? What's the next thing in the sense of, you know, you have less cars buying gas? So, you know, what are your thoughts on toll roads down the road? Or, you know, would this tax get us everything that we need, you know, in the next, you know, 10, 15, 20 years?
Right. And so, and I apologize if I misspoke. So this tax that we're talking about is a half-cent general sales tax, right? So even as fuel, you know, stops getting purchased, as when you go to a restaurant or, you know, you go buy a pair of jeans, right? That retail transaction is going to, you know, add, you know, revenue to the, basically, I'll call it our local transportation trust fund. So that will help over time. That will stay steady. And as, you know, our economy grows, that should grow. So that should be good. But you asked, will, you know, will this get us all of the way there? The truth is, this generates $1.58 billion. If you were to look at, you know, our long-range plan, we would identify $6 billion. We would probably, of need, we would probably say $3 billion of that is extremely critical. So this, you know, unto itself, does not get us all of the way there. Last December, we raised our developer impact fees by 80% the first time since 2009 via, you know, our entity, Sparta. That helps us get there. So a combination of developer impact fees, this sales tax, and then trying to go get that soft money back, that additional grant money. But there still will, there still will be gaps.
Okay. Was 2016 also a sales tax?
It was.
Okay. All right. Thanks for clarifying.
Yep.
You know, looking at the expenditure plan and sitting on the PCTPA board, I see this firsthand. But I see $75 million for construction and to improve pedestrian, bicycle and pedestrian and neighborhood electric vehicle facilities to support walkable and bikable communities, including safe routes to school. So this expenditure plan is not just about building lane miles.
No.
This expenditure plan is not about putting everybody on the Capitol Quarter and getting them to Sacramento. This is a multifaceted transportation plan.
It is. And I want to reiterate, you know, 52% of it is identified for major, major regional, you know, highway and roads that move large volumes of regional traffic. So I think that's pretty balanced. And also, it's in recognition that that category of transportation facility is least likely to get any assistance from the state. But the other 48% is not regional roadways. Half of that comes back to the municipalities. You all in Roseville could choose to take your entire 12.5% of $5 million, you know, dollars a year and build nothing but bike lanes with it. As long as there's a transportation benefit to the district, that's absolutely acceptable. We haven't said that any of the municipalities in the district must do this project or that project. That's why it's programmatic. That's for this body and you all to decide. And then, yes, the other, I got to do the quick math there. The other 23% is for regional transit, biking, and competitive projects. So it's pretty balanced.
We set up something called Arrow On Demand Ride Sharing, right? Money could go to that.
Yes.
Okay. And the last general question before we open for public comment. How vital is something like this to a region's economic prosperity?
Well, you know, really, all we do in the transportation sector is connect, you know, you know, what transportation does is connect all of the sort of vital portions of the economy, whether that's every morning what we always tend to focus on, peak-hour congestion, which is the home-based work trip, right? It's getting people to work. Or you will hear people talk about, we don't want to induce demand. That's something you'll hear around the state, induce demand. Well, you know what that really means in lay terms? in lay per, since, in lay terms, it means encouraging trip making. And when you start to retard and reduce people's mobility and actually want to restrict trip making, you're actually having a negative economic impact. Do you know when we had reduced trip making? 2008. Did we enjoy that? I did not enjoy that. You know, we, we want people, if they're sitting on the couch on a Thursday night, and they're like, boy, I'd love a pint of ice cream, we want them to think, I'm going to get up and go get that pint of ice cream, because I can get over to the, you know, pick your favorite store real easy. So, when you restrict mobility, you are restricting the economy and you are restricting growth. And quite frankly, it typically impacts our lower-income communities the most. So, we want a very open and free-flowing transportation system to connect all of the sectors of our economy.
Thank you very much. We'll open it up for public comment.
Do I need to fill out a card, or now or later?
You can fill it out later.
Thank you. Mike Garabedian, Placer County, tomorrow. I'm really delighted to be here to hear Roseville moving forward, based on its analytics and the hard work you've all been doing around the world. And I suppose I'm here to talk about analytics, too. The analytics of future transportation, and looking to the voters to, to pay for it. This proposal will solve very little. It's an old problem, it's been around, if not, what, decades? Certainly years. And I'll be happy to meet and talk with people after trying to summarize some of these points here. And it's a supply and demand problem you're all familiar with. And it's just extreme in highways, you create a supply, and it's immediately filled. And I have a handout here, increasing highway, highway capacity unlikely to relieve traffic congestion. I can hand that out. And the book by Susan Handy at Davis, her new book, with a chapter on that in it, a great resource person. So, I, I suggest, I'm thinking here, hearing, and I've thrown out my notes, we need to look to the, I hope you would look to the past as a possibility, as well as the future. An example of the past is Sacramento RT. Roseville used to be in Sacramento Transit. I looked at their plan down there to run a rail through Antelope out to the, this is early 90s or something, out to the Galleria. I'm sure that, that, that area, that route is gone, but maybe there's some reason, there's some, maybe that might have part, a part of an answer here. So, the, the old idea that you have before us, they're considering it, has, in the transportation, now, one of the users of, of Placer Parkway is the casino. They've volunteered in a contract with the county to pay, I think it's $9 million, I forget the figure. They're going to make a contribution to that. So, maybe users, like the developers, or, or like some of these people coming, would use their analytics that haven't been used yet to look at the alternatives, the other alternatives to widening, widening the highway. Certainly, there are improvements needed. So, the, I, I want to try to be positive, I guess. And, but, we'll, we'll oppose this proposal. Like, I worked against it in, in 2012. A million dollars was spent to try to pass it. I'm not sure that was the best use of money, but it, and it failed. I'm really concerned now. I, I opposed Assembly Bill 1413, 13, when it was in the Assembly, sat next to the, the, the tax group there, and in opposing it, because what that's going to do is that the people, as I understand it, the people in the three cities are going to be able to vote on the, on the tax, but then everybody else that shops in the county is not getting, is not going to be able to vote on it. So, I, I think that's a little, if I'm understanding that correctly, that's, that's a concern about it. So, like I said, I'll be glad to talk to people. I don't know the best way to hand these out, but...
Over there on the side.
Okay, I'll do that when I sign my form. And again, I'm really delighted to hear what this city's doing. But, I think that's exactly the kind of thinking that you need to bring to transit now. And I'm afraid these old ideas are trying the same thing 20, 30 years ago, is, needs to be looked at new and supplemented. Thank you.
Jeff Short, North State BIA. We are very much in favor of this proj, of this project list. We believe that these are, represent vital needs for already-approved and much-needed housing. So, again, very much in favor, and encourage you to vote yes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Derek Pell. I'm on the Transportation Commission, but I'm here in my personal capacity. I want to thank staff, PCTPA, and especially Jason Chakowsky for taking the time out of his busy schedule to talk with me about this. I come before you with three items, hopefully I can read my handwriting and get through it in a few minutes. One, a few thoughts on this expenditure plan. Two, some musings on transportation in general. And three, somewhat of a call to action. My, my first thought was, wow, that's a lot of money, you know, $1.58 billion over 30 years. The way the plan is written and coupled to ACA I, that's solely appropriate designing, delivery, and building hard infrastructure, not operational costs. You know, my second thought is, wow, infrastructure's expensive. You know, that's 52% of expenditures are to be spent on just six projects, and so, that's over $130 million for each of those projects. I want to focus a little bit on the other 48% since of that plan. You know, likely $800 million in transportation funding over 30 years. This is a massive influx of cash to Southern Placer County. This funding will not just enable infrastructure maintenance, but delivery of new projects, including contributing to the expansion of Capitol Corridor, up to 10 round trips up to Roseville every day. It'll also expand matching funds availability at the state level. You know, speaking of funds going to bikeways, we have the ATP ongoing, the first, there's an online survey going on right now, and the first community workshop is April 11th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Riley Library. You know, this plan has the potential to be transformational for our region. As you can see with the scale of the measure, infrastructure is hard and expensive to build. The way we spend this money is going to lock in a lot of Roseville's future. And I think we can disagree on allocation percentage between transportation modes, but agree that the sales tax is going to benefit South Placer and Roseville for years to come. A couple of thoughts on transportation. You know, it's, it's one side of the transportation land use coin. The way we build and the way we plan our land use drives our transportation needs and vice versa. To that point, we will induce demand however we build. So, we should build and build and spend that money smart. It has been decidedly proven again and again, the old adage, build it and they will come, rings true. Across the nation and the world, there are examples, from COVID-era quick-build bike lanes in Paris that transformed the city. LA is investing massive sums of money in metro, and ridership's booming. And famously, LA spent $1.6 billion to widen 10 miles of I-405, and traffic got worse. You know, I'm continually convinced there is widespread support and demand to be able to get around without getting in the car. In 2016, LA, which is perhaps the most auto-centric city in the history of the world, passed Measure M to significantly expand metro. It's 100 times the size of this measure. Recently, Measure HLA requiring LA to implement its mobility plan passed with almost a two-thirds margin. This would, this is intended to result in investment in walkability and bike infrastructure. Closer to home, I read through the more than 200 public comments on PCTPA's unmet transit needs. You know, none of them met the pretty narrow criteria for what is an unmet transit need. It is pages and pages and pages of local residents asking for better transportation. You know, to round this out, I, I think I have a somewhat of a call to action for you all. You know, be bold, think big, think different. You all have the unenviable, unenviable task of working with the constraints of reality to get things done. You know, I believe that your leadership can make a difference. We live at the eastern edge of the Northern California mega-region. The way that we and our neighbors plan our growth will lock in our climate impact and our lifestyle for years to come. For my kids, for their kids, you know, we're going to be here a long time. So, I want to thank you all for your time and hope to see this go through. Thank you.
Other comment, other comments? All right. I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. If there are any additional questions or comments, we'll start with Councilman Albert.
I knew as soon as I put that M and M in my mouth, you were going to call me.
We'll start with Councilwoman Rakuti.
Okay. I don't have something in my mouth, so I guess it's my turn. I, I guess I'm looking at what, what we're tasked to do tonight, or looked at the list of the projects that Roseville would want to have. And then, you did answer my questions. We're still not stopping to look at how to get money. It's difficult, it's not easy, but we are doing it at both at the state and the federal level, and we're going on different trips to see different departments and seeing if we can, if we're, have that opportunity of getting some funding. So, before us is, do we like the list? Do we feel that that's the list that's important to us? We are not here to vote for a sales tax. We are, we are here to, to see if this list are things that are very important to us, and that makes a critical difference on our transportation here in Roseville and Placer County. And how, and do we feel the same way as, staff has just presented to us that this is indeed important. And this is a list that we'd want out there and looking for funding. That's kind of where I'm at, in that we're here for checking out the projects and seeing if that's, if that's meaningful for our city.
Councilmember M. Donza?
I've asked, I need to. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Albert, is your M and M gone?
It was awesome, yes. So, I realize we are not voting to put it on the ballot, but I do appreciate that the PCTPA is considering putting this on the ballot. And I'm going to speak for myself. I'm guessing my fellow council members have similar experiences, but one of the largest complaints I get as a council member is transportation-related. Roads that aren't widened, the traffic backup, why do we keep building houses and we're not widening roads? And it is tough. And I, I think it would be a great thing for you guys to put this on the ballot and let them vote and decide to, to fix this problem or not. One of the challenges that we have, Roseville and our region is expected by the state and almost forced to build. We have RENA numbers that are incredible. We have to build to meet these numbers. The state is requiring that of us, but they're not letting us widen our roads. And the funding that we created many, many moons ago doesn't work anymore, because they're not matching it like we expected, like we budgeted for. This is a really big deal, and I really hope that we can put pressure on our state legislators, like, look, if you're going to force communities to build, you need to give them transportation dollars. I, I get it, the big cities have the transportation issues, but they have no more room to build. They're, they're putting it on us and giving the dollars to somebody else. So, it's, it's very annoying, that whole process. The other thing that I've noticed is when Roseville did the half-cent sales tax for our Measure B, you know, there was concerns about, you know, I, I like that you're having a commission look at it, but I tell you, when we are in control of the money, we get stuff done. When the state's in control of the money, we just see a little bit of it, and things could change. But, I, I like the concept that we are in control of the money, and the projects that we have here fix the issues that people are complaining about. And the roughly $5 million a year that can come into Roseville to, to work on transportation, we've got stuff we need to do here. And, and we hear about it all the time. And so, I'm looking forward to this. I'm looking forward to our community being able to vote and decide if they want to fix this problem, or sit back and, and hope a miracle happens. So, that's, that's my feeling on it. Thanks for letting me speak about it.
Vice Mayor Bernascony?
I don't have anything new to add, other than just to underscore Councilmember Rakuti's comment about that we are not here this evening to vote whether or not that this tax goes forward, but rather the expenditure plan. And for the next seven months, your job is going to be the education piece. And we'll look forward to seeing what you all come up with, and if we can be a resource for you, let us know.
Thank you. I want to refine my question about the economy, right? I mean, we're, Roseville, we're bordered by future university, a fairly large development. We have some folks that are looking at our area. We have some, some innovation centers and some commercial office. So, will they, you know, what, what's kind of the job generation, Jason or, or Matt, that you might see should this go through?
Oh, boy. I wish Barry, is Barry still here? Where's the, where's the economist?
At Free Range. Barry's not here. Dream big.
Well, I will, there are certainly a number of jobs that get created, right? There are construction jobs, and there will be jobs associated with the, the program just from the sec, just from the standpoint that there's spending, right? So, there is absolutely federal models on, you know, how many jobs are created, I think, by every million dollars of construction activity. And I wish I could still pull that out of my head, and I wasn't, you know, 51 years old now. But, and then there, 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 there is certainly that, and then there is ongoing economic benefit, which, which you can calculate. But, I, I will say anecdotally, without being able to, to quote a number to you, you know, one of the things, I mean, you know, if we, if we look at it, the, the reason we're so successful is the fact that, you know, we have law enforcement that keeps us safe, we have principals of great schools, we have phenomenal parks, right? But, part of that, too, is transportation. And you might actually not feel it today, or in the next five, or the next 10 years. But, as a market, as, as, if all of those red lines on that map congeal over time, the level of, you know, Southwest Placer's competitiveness relative to the other markets you all compete with, like Elk Grove and Folsom, will decline. Because people won't be able to get to move around, and they're going to say, well, I think I'll just buy that house in Elk Grove. And that's a very real thing that will happen over time, if transportation doesn't, if we don't keep people moving.
Suffice it to say, they're not all retail jobs. There's some high-tech jobs and some, some real opportunity if we have the roadway system that folks make the decision. I mean, I, I forget which, forget which facility it was, but, but for the improvements to Highway 65 that happened in the first phase, they would have gone somewhere else. It might have been a hospital system. I have a faulty memory, and I'm significantly older than you are, so.
Mayor, if I may, I'm dying to get this out. Let me take a little different approach. And so, I, I think the question that, that was asked is a great one. And it has to do with Roseville and our specific planning, our jobs-housing balance, right? And so, in order to have the jobs in the, in the industry we need, we need the traffic infrastructure to move. And without these types of improvements and the traffic infrastructure, then it really not only has an impact on our inability to, to deliver on those jobs and that diverse house jobs and jobs balance, but it also impacts our, our quality of life directly. And so, I think that, to the root of your question, it certainly is critical for that jobs-housing balance that makes Roseville special. And, and so, I think, as we look forward, we want to make sure that we can continue to deliver on the specific planned promises we've made. And part of that is certainly transportation planning.
Thank you very much. And, you know, I, first, firsthand experience coming north on Highway 65, I think that's north going toward Lincoln. I went, yep, I'm not going to make the City Council meeting if I continue to go to Pleasant Grove. I veered off, I went past the Galleria, I caught all the lights, thanks to our great, you know, intelligent transportation system, whipped around. But, I sought another path, right? Because I looked at the, looked at the taillights, and I went, man, I'm not take, I gotta be here. I can't take the risk that there's an accident at Blue Oaks. And the same thing with our, with our public safety, right? You know, they, firefighters and the ambulance can't get through, the police can't get through if the road's congested. So, you know, and the, and the last thing as part of, Vice Mayor said, the, the education program, it was $6 and, and a tip this morning for my cup of coffee. I do drink coffee more than once a week, so I imagine that, you know, my sales, the sales tax, you know, over the course of the year would be less than my, my budget for my coffee, right? So, with that, we're ready for a motion.
Thank you. On item 8.2, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 24-058, approving a draft transportation sales tax expenditure DT step plan. This time, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
You may have a second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Donza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuti.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Yes.